Helping us with this proactive effort. And it seemed to get the attention of folks. We also, I also met with the management at the well, casual little Mexican restaurant for allowing loud music. Jim, I took your advice and built their coffin then. Management said that they were gonna buy and keep the music outside and down. However, Friday night I got heard of another big party. Been getting a lot of complaints from their underage drinking in the restaurant or serving. Went over Friday night. Bad music before, what was it, six o'clock? And it was blaring outside, front doors open, so I stopped again. But this time I need the people that were playing the music. So look, any complaints, guys, guys, what do you want us to do? I say, by the time it gets dark, the doors gotta be closed, music's gotta be inside, speakers have gotta be inside. And the volume of the speakers out here are completely better trying to sleep residents being here. Okay, so I didn't get any more complaints that night. However, we did end up get that DUI come there that night. Flared one of our officers through Buckingham County. So it's just some problems there that we're trying to get addressed. I've made some proactive phone calls to some other folks and I hope that maybe we can determine whether or not the alcohol is hopefully the alcohol is not being sold to underage folks, but we'll hopefully be able to determine that.
My only other advice for wondering if it's worth is be called to give you ABC investigative and examining, considering. See if he can use his help. That's smart for those guys.
You probably already done.
Probably say it's already happened. But anyway, I'm hoping, hoping that they're, they're doing business the way they're supposed to be. And it's a one off. But we'll see. We will see. I don't know, let's see here, I have a pop up at Canal Basin. If council has not seen them, I would encourage everyone to go back Canal Basin and take a look at those three behemoth hot holes over there. They've been built. And I would also encourage anyone that hasn't seen Van Cleef in a little bit, go by there. The sinkholes are gone. Jam and I worked all day and we took twenty bucket loads of milling from asphalt milling over to Canal Basin and fill those hot holes. They looked really good, they leveled. It seemed like the heat is starting to, we milled that asphalt into those holes pretty good. Jam and I took a bunch of flat rocks. I don't know, they were three foot and, you know, I mean, they're just huge flat rocks. And we literally stuck them in those freighters over there at Van Cleef. Pushed them down as far to the bottom as we could and impacted milling on top of it. Run over it with our tractor trucks and put more and more and more on it. So it looks like it's holding pretty good. You been over there, Mr. Bridgestone?
Where, where are you referring to?
You had to.
Oh yeah, looks great.
So when you go in, pass the drive.
The main, the main road.
Go to the shop, that big mud that used to be there at the top there. But it was a sinkhole.
Yeah. That's great.
But it's gone now. Took the tractor and pushed all of the timber and stuff off of the road and, you know, cleaned it up pretty good. We participated in the community events this past month. Communicated, participated in a Hudson up with farmer's month event at Scottville Elementary. Also can see our auxiliary officers donated forty eight and a half hours of their time. And then I really like to thank the entertainment panel, Mr. Payne, Mayor Smith, or assisting Sergeant Foca and myself. So two days of interviews for police officers. We were supposed to have three, the Friday before last, two showed up. And then we had one man come from the state of New York down that had applied and down. That whole thing in community events. For these folks, know the background process. We've still gotta get polygraph, psychological exam, physical, medical testing and stuff done before the July what, seventh date, that's when the academy would start. So we have to, we're really fast paced in those type of events to that, to fully get to the academy, get that done. Another activity on the P cars this past month. And council had an opportunity on Thursday to look at the fall for service and stats. This past month, any questions? The officers are gonna make a trip down to South Carolina tomorrow and pick up a new D C car and drop it off in no, no, get Brooks Education for its build, you know, and they'll take a number of months to get the car to be and get the cameras and all of that put in for us and put into the vehicle. But anyway, moving forward with that. Fortunately, the town put up the initial funding for the vehicle and once the foundation gets the money transferred over to the police foundation, the foundation reimbursed the town for the cost of the vehicles. We're just waiting on those funds to transfer.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief, and thank you, all your people, for what they do for us. There's supposed to be a representative from the auditing firm here to.
Yes, so Josh Roller, partner over at RFC that does our annual audit. It's gonna join us on Zoom.
So he's gotta speak to us from the big screen.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, good evening, my name's Josh Roller with Robinson Farmer Cox. And here today to go through the fiscal year twenty four audit report. Do you all have the actual report in front of you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll reference page numbers as I'm going through it. The first part of the report there will start on page five, the page number's at the bottom. This is our independent auditor's report. This is where we have issued a clean opinion. It's also called an unmodified opinion. It's the best opinion we can give you all. But that was the, the clean opinion that was issued for the fiscal year ending June twenty twenty four. Also on that page, it talks a little about, about management responsibility to the financial statements. You know, management is responsible for the preparation, presentation of the financials to kind of ensure they're in accordance with accounting standards and principles. And then on to the next page, page six, talks a little bit about the auditor's responsibility as it relates to the audit. You know, we're in charge of assessing the risks of the town. And from those risks, we do our internal control testing, which is on a sample basis. We don't test every transaction, obviously, for the whole year. But we do look at certain payroll transactions, certain accounts payable transactions. Certainly various different transactions as from revenue standpoint, as well as kind of looking at some bigger items, you know, your, obviously your cash accounts, looking at the year end reconciliations, et cetera. And from all that testing, the end goal is to get to that clean, unmodified opinion, which we did. And then from there, I'll actually, I'll just point your attention to a few of the financial statements, a few of the tables within the audit report. I'm happy to pause at any time you guys have questions, happy to field any questions you guys have at the end. But if you flip forward a little bit to page thirteen. Page thirteen is your general fund balance sheet as of the end of the year. So this shows your year end balances of your cash, investments receivables, as well as your liabilities. And two pages forward, on page fifteen, this is your statement of revenues, expenditures, change of fund balance just for the general fund. Just for the one year period ending June thirtieth. You can see your total revenues in the general fund reported, that seven hundred ninety five thousand. Then towards the bottom there, your total expenditures for the year of seven hundred forty four thousand, leading to an increase in fund balance of that fifty one thousand one six seven. And that ending fund balance there, that five hundred thirty eight thousand, that's the same amount reported on that balance sheet on exhibit, exhibit three. And from there, I'll flip forward quite a ways, page forty nine. Everything that I kind of skipped over there, those are all the footnotes to the financial statements. Going into a lot more detail and description of certain items there, but no changes in last year's notes to this year's as it relates to reporting requirements or anything that had to be changed. So on to that page forty nine, this is exhibit seven. This is the same information that was reported on exhibit five there, but this brings into account the budget numbers as well. So you can see your total revenues of seven hundred ninety five thousand one ninety four. That was over your budget amount of seven hundred fifty five thousand. And then down on the other side or towards the bottom there, your total expenditures of seven hundred forty four oh two seven is pretty spot on with your budget number there of seven hundred forty three thousand eight seventy three. Again, leading to that, the, the surplus for the year of fifty one thousand one six seven. And then the last thing I'll talk about here, the last two pages of the report, starting on page fifty eight. This is our, the auditor's report on internal controls or financial reporting. Again, we test various controls as part of the audit process. We don't provide an opinion on the entire internal control system. But from our testing, from our sampling, we had no issues that needed to be disclosed here. So a clean report here as well. You know, it talks a little bit about certain deficiencies in internal controls. They can either be significant deficiency or material weakness. And in this letter, we are disclosing that we had no issues that need to be reported, no issues that raised to that level at all. So a cleaner report on that end as well. And then now I'm happy to field any questions that you guys have.
Sir, my name is Jim Ollie, I'm the council attorney. During the course of your audit, did you find any evidence that would lead to believe there was anything improper going on in the county's files?
Uh, no, sir, no, there was nothing that needed to be disclosed. Certainly if it was something improper, when you use that word, I would, that would raise, the board would already know about that, or the council would already know about that. For sure.
This is what you call a pretty, a clean audit.
Exactly, yep, clean opinion. No management letter comments, no findings, as clean of an opinion, clean of an audit as we can issue.
Thank you very much, sir.
Absolutely.
Any council people have a question for Mr. Roller?
I have a question, I'm just, the, the fund balance, is there a recommended fund balance, balance you have, like percentage or a number that you make sure that we're, you know, not going under?
Yeah, so there's, you know, various different benchmarks, you know, depending on who you look at, they're gonna say a different number, a different, you know, percentage. I think a very safe conservative number is if your fund balance is at least six months' worth of expenditures. So just looking at that on exhibit five, your total expenditures for the year were seven hundred forty four thousand. So you know, about half of that is three hundred seventy five thousand. So you're, and you're ending fund balance of five hundred thirty eight. So from that, you know, six months' worth of expenditure benchmark, then, then you're covered there.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for your time, Mr. Roller.
Absolutely, thank you all for having me.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, what a great job Javier and Melody have done in getting this all prepared. And also what, what an excellent job they've done with, because books buying large for this fiscal year. Some of the new members don't know this, but for several years, the town has had difficulty in getting its audit completed. It's been substantially delayed. I think Javier and Melody are responsible for getting all that up to date. And then to come up with a clean audit without even needing a management letter with no comments. That's pretty unusual in the, in the local government audit, so there to be compliment, I think.
Thank you.
Way to go, guys.
I have a question for you. Is this a normal timeframe, it's almost at the end of the, at the beginning of the budget cycle when we get these things? Or do they come earlier than this?
You wanted a little bit earlier, so about two months earlier.
About March.
Yeah, because you do late fall and then over the winter, and then you could present something early.
Okay, all right, thanks.
But having his defense, Javier made them come back through several issues that weren't resolved with satisfaction.
Yes.
And that, that resulted in them having to come back and correct what they should have, what, what they, you know, they might have problem in long run. So that's partially the reason for delay, not believing.
Melody's been pretty eagle eyed, asking the right questions, which helps.
Great.
Most of it is informative for us, yes.
Okay, next up is Elizabeth Harrington Smith with Cityscape Consultants. This is dealing with the cell tower issue. We're coming up for a renewal of the contract with the cell tower people. And there's different options that we have available. So we just, we made the decision to just consult a consultant and see what they had to say. It hasn't cost us anything yet. And after you hear the presentation, then you can think about whether you want to hire the consultant or if you want to go in another direction. So Ms. Smith?
Hi, thank you so much for, for allowing me to come in. So I spoke with Javier, I think it was last week. And the town was solicited by Tower Alliance, who is a subsidiary of American Tower. And they're looking, they're wanting some rent, they're, they're proposing rent options. And so Javier contacted us and I'm with Cityscape Consultants. And we are a wireless communication consultant. We work exclusively with local government and help them navigate anything having to do with cell towers and wireless communication, whether it's permitting, master planning, leasing on public property. And so once we, we, we haven't actually dove into it, because you guys haven't hired us yet. But what we would do is we would take a look at the existing agreement. We would do a lot of comparison, see what all of the provisions are. We would look at what Tower Alliance is proposing. And then we would outline it for you so that you had a really clear picture. And you're able to make a really good informed decision of which direction you want to go. Whether it's just renewing the contract with, you know, of course, the escalators and the rent continuing to come to the town either monthly or annually. Or whether it's, you do want to look at different options of perpetual easements or, you know, for forever, ninety nine years. Sometimes I've seen that sixty years. Oh, sorry. Sorry, I'm in Florida and there's a tornado warning. So my, all my devices are going off there, sorry about that. Anyway, so we would do a deep dive for you, take a look and into all the different provisions. And then we would make a recommendation of what we think would be in the best interest. But then, of course, you would have the final decision.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Smith? How much is your salary?
So it's an, it would be the per diem rate, since it's just a one time, one time thing. And it, it depends on the number of hours of services and it depends on who's actually looking at it. So if it's an attorney, if we need to get our attorney involved, it's a higher rate. If it's, you know, myself or our leasing, leasing manager, she and I have a lesser rate. And then we typically, she and I, we've done this now for fifteen years. So we look at everything and then we have our attorney kind of give it as their blessing, his blessing and before we present anything. So it's an hour, and it could be anywhere from ten to fifteen hours, depending on if you want us to negotiate, go back to American Tower and negotiate on your behalf. And if you want us to write the amendment, write a new lease, whatever, whatever the outcome might be. So it's just, I gave you guys a, the, a per diem rate based on that, those, and I think it was sorry, I don't have that pulled up right now, but I did give you the scope of service for that, didn't I, Mr. Mayor?
Any other questions?
Yes, do you say you've done this or do this explicitly track?
Yes, we work exclusively with local government. We don't build towers, we don't work with the wireless industry. I mean, we, we deal with them, but on behalf of local government.
We have information on your, I guess, from our perspective, will be overturned. Is there a higher percentage negotiated generally, or I'm not sure exactly what what we can expect if we do go with you guys?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we, you know, we've seen it all. I mean, honestly, based on this letter, my initial opinion is you actually don't really have to do anything. It looks like the final, you know, depending on what your lease, existing lease is, I don't, you don't have to do anything. They're just, they come to, they do solicit towns and cities and counties all over the, like, once a week, looking for rent reductions. So very rarely do we make a recommendation that it, that it's in the best interest. Sometimes we will make, you know, we'll look at it and if the town is looking for a lump sum payment, sometimes for something or another, you know, that might be of interest. But we would always look to negotiate a higher rate. We would never, we, we, we absolutely negotiate higher rates on behalf of the communities.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? Mayor, would this be a time for us to talk about it or is this, is that later in the?
What we need, what we need to do is just gather all the information you can for this week. And then next Monday, we will discuss whether to consider hiring a consultant to help with this matter, or if we just want to go ahead and make a decision on our own and have it over with. And discuss which we think is the best route for us to go.
One of the things, Mr. Mayor, that Eileen presented and Alex, when you were here last time, was I thought a really good option, this, I think it was the sixty year option that I have been not in favor of for a number of years, but I think there's a compelling reason to do it this time. I think it was good to hear this, because this is, I think, what is done through Foodvanna. But we've already negotiated with them and already do have an offer that's, I think, a really good offer. So as we go to next week, for my part, I would be actually wanting to do that. So as, as we talk and as we, as people are interested, I'm, I'm suggesting that we actually take the sixty year lease and that we have had a good dialogue with the cell tower company from a former town counselor who's worked on it, negotiated already. And the conversation about bringing this organization in, it was also, was to see, would it be helpful? And I think it could be helpful, but at the same time, we're also aware that the offer that is being done is something that the value of what cell towers may be is, is possibly changing. So at any rate, that's my thought as we go into next week.
I want to coordinate with your limit to forty, forty years, forty years. I thought I was sitting here, we don't, no, it's forty, okay.
So if I could jump in, if you don't mind, there's all sorts of things you could do, forty, fifty, thirty, depending on what.
We're limited to forty years by the Virginia Constitution.
Yeah, well, oh, okay. So the, but the one thing I would caution is to make sure that you get your finance department involved. One of the things that we've come across in the past is that, and is for various reasons. And it happened prior to us coming on with the community, is that they did do this, they sold off a lease for, with a perpetual easement, similar to this structure. And they were not able to actuate the money for what they, they needed to pay, like, I don't know what it was, a tax bill, I think it was, that was coming due. And they were not able to use the money for that. They actually had to, to actuate it over a monthly. So they, they ended up losing money at the end of the day, because they were taking lesser amount and they were not able to use it as it was intended. So that's just something that I would, you know, when we get, and if we were to get involved in this, we would dig into all of those as well. And one thing that we come across too with these types of companies is they do try and they do, they will pull on your heartstrings for that sort of thing. If you're, if they know that you have that in mind, they will push you. And you just have to be real careful that you're protecting your interests, that's all. And, you know, they can, they can't pull, we've been doing this since nineteen ninety seven. So what they, you know, they sometimes say from a, you know, oh, these providers are going away. We actually did a wireless master plan for Albemarle County. And so this tower in question was one of the towers, we've been out there, I've personally been out there. And you do have two providers out there, Verizon and T-Mobile. So neither one of those are going away anytime soon. You know, they're not gonna lose the lease, they're not gonna get any less money on that tower. And so, and there's opportunity for AT&amp;T and Dish Wireless to also go on that tower. So it's, it's not going anywhere for sure.
Okay, any other questions? Again, thank you for your time, we'll discuss it and we'll try to, if we can't make a decision on this thing next Monday.
Sounds good, thank you so much.
Hey. Beth, you have anything for Scan?
Okay, I'll sit here.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I wanted to start off with a comment about, you know, presentation at my county council meetings last month regarding the nonprofit funds that are in the county. That what I want to say is that it was narrowly intent to take money from the Boys and Girls Club, which is what I'm now hearing, you're thinking wrong. No, I'm hearing that, I'm making a deal. Just wanted to live in here and know how things work. But some, it was my understanding that the process was going to be opening up. And I was just, now I have a request also at the last meeting in nine, so that was my understanding. And I just wanted to make it clear here that Scan is on what you do. You can play a, that's valid. And to dispel, dispel any of those thoughts that are mentioned out there.
Let me just respond, because I was involved this a lot last year. And we, we don't have a process or a procedure for us to do this. And that was one of the problems, we probably have to advertise it, it needs two votes. One is to approve it, we don't have to spend the money from the town, we don't have to take money out of the town, because it's, you know. But the second one would be to whom or to which agencies to go to. And in order to do that, from what I understand, and what the, we'd have to advertise and make sure everybody knows about this, so they can apply for it too. So it doesn't have to go to one agency, it could go to multiple agencies, or it doesn't have to go to any of them. But anyway, that's the process from what I understand, and we don't have that process down yet. That might be something we need to discuss, but we have, who is eligible? But we don't have the process.
Thank you. Okay, so on Scan, we have, don't have a little flyer, if you would like to keep, well, that's fine. If not, we're gonna just take a look. I have a packet for Melody and then we come here and we put out. But we have, I want to mention the nature, we present this Saturday, but we're, one of the board members is holding it every third Saturday at the Scanland Major Park. And it's a guided hike walk with a suggested ten dollar donation. For example, for example, coming when, June, I'm home here today, it falls on home here day, should be guiding about some best common volunteers. Some interesting things about the land each time. Secondly, on the top right, you'll see it's a workshop that recently started at, at the gallery of the seniors. And I think what's really neat, besides bringing the art and the teaching of the art, is now some. teaching of the art is now it's a way for artists to earn money because musicians do, and there's a happen as often, so they, the artists that have a business can um um get ready on their craft. We're gonna come down with a bike sale. It's gonna be in the front yard. You can maybe do things in the front yard. There's a draw and all this stuff. Scan Summer Camp, uh, first time this year to pilot. Maybe not the first time, we've been here twenty years, but first time in a few years. Uh there'll be, uh kids, uh first big third grade, then they'll start out at the nature park on Scanland. They'll also have activities at the art gallery. And they'll also have activities here in theater and they'll put on a whole place and the whole week they'll get those and everything that Scan does. And then lastly is um the music and their event. That is this new, towards this year, Nancy Gill was here for the start, was from the Mary Hardy. Is anyone else here near Mary Hardy?
My kids, the kids.
Okay, I understand she was a, every, that in town with music and pedals and instruments and that.
She was amazing.
Amazing, the music going. So this is a way for Scan to commemorate her getting the start of it to be her hundredth birthday. The family is coming, the Hardy family, they'll be playing at Victory Hall. I'm not sure the time that they're gonna be there yet, but starting out with a parade. Um the uh pavilion to the market to Canal Basin Square, they, yeah. Party Family Band, Kim and Jim O'Carry, who are musicians that were going on with State, will be at Victory Hall. The uh mu- history of Victory Hall at the museum, it'll be all over town. We'll set the library, porch building, one of the uh art gallery and the bluegrass jam at the brewery, at the brewery. So sort of pilot, we'll see how it goes. We'll try to do it every year if we can, and maybe bring in another event. All the new music concerts that are starting right now. So uh those, those are the things that Scan's doing the next couple months. And I wanted to end with, uh, we took a a poll at our board meeting last week, the family hours, the board members had put in that week. Like that week. And it was a hundred and twenty volunteer hours. Which I know y'all can be there next. That was three full-time recruits, three S T Es. All volunteers, and we're glad to do it. We love to do it. And but it helps support, but yeah, I always appreciate having the relationships and anything else. Yeah, there's a place to put up fire, but not attended events, that's great too. Oh, one more last thing. We're changing the encircers every four to six weeks at the gallery. So I know, so good that they're already. And so it's changed again last week. We've already been there for six weeks. That's the heat, the doll, and of interest, changing for the locals. And I worked there on Sunday to cover, recovering gallery hours with all volunteers, for us, more members, you know, volunteering. And we had, we had a local group that come in to see their art, and we had visitors, Jess from New York, and some um Richmond. So we kind of got two groups that are making that, which I know is in the town as well. That's important. If anything else on our channel.
How did the play go? I didn't get to go this one.
Oh, it was very good. Um, it was very fun. That makes it well fun.
It's very good. I did it last two, but that one, that was.
Heard the barking that we heard in the east. It was well attended.
Good.
Yeah, it was very.
Great.
Okay, well, thank you so much. I have a chamber board meeting in the morning, uh, so I don't have a whole lot to report on that, other than it's the twenty-third is when the Canal Basin first Friday thing. The, the couple that own the barbecue parks outside the brewery, uh, they have put together a event for the fourth Friday of the month. The first one will be Friday, the twenty-third. Canal Basin Square, there'll be food, music, uh, sort of like we used to have some years ago. And then if anything exciting comes out of the board meeting in the morning, I'll report it to you. Amelie's not here. We have a written report from the farm manager, uh Farmer's Market Manager, so uh just read that at your convenience. And if you have any questions from her report, contact her directly. ARB, Mr.
I have a question about maybe how do you answer this? Where, where are we at with the paging of the vote? Are we, are we uh ready to get with?
Yes, I spoke with you last.
Yeah.
I asked you, Blue Ridge, uh Food Main, and Ball and Valley, and on the day, they didn't have a date.
But they're on it.
Yeah, they're on it.
Okay.
Um, they had a, but they, they had everything they'd been on our side of.
Okay. Okay, great. I'm glad we're gonna follow through on that.
ARB. Okay. Land and Commission, Mr. Ritzko.
We welcome a new commissioner, Dr. Kerrigan. Uh, we had an update on a section of the comp plan. It continues to get closer to completion and we will have another vacancy uh starting in July. Is that correct? July? Uh, yeah, and well, she'll be gone and do the, the, the spot opens in July, from my, my understanding. And I think, are we still taking people Javier in terms of the dates? But I know we have had at least a person apply for it.
Yeah, so it's supposed to downstairs um for uh for the la- for the upcoming vacancy. So it'd be important for council to spread the word, um so we have full participation on that, on the commission.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any questions for Planet Commission? Government Services, Mr. Heisen.
Uh, we, we would like to get another member as well. We, we did have an official meeting. Uh but there was some discussion that uh we would like to get another, uh member, one of the members left uh last month and we'd like to get one more.
Is that advertised on our board too?
No, but I.
Put something out there for that? Any reports from anybody on parks and recreation, other than the chiefs, hard work and patching the road?
Yeah, I mean, I recognize you again, chief for uh going beyond the call of duty to work on that road. Uh, not many police chiefs would have to be taking the day to do that and using your own equipment. That was really nice of you. Um, well, one of the, a couple of things we've talked about is uh get, uh putting a history of the park on the back of the the map. We have a really incredible map. And we thought we might use the backside to put the history on it and also the rules. And the other thing we started to work on is updating the master plan. The, the master plan, I think, was done in two fifteen or two seventeen. And it'd probably be good to stay in, 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 in sync with uh the uh plan, the uh comp plan. So uh most of the uh most of the, uh, most of the projects have been implemented. And some of them have decided that to pursue. So we may just either uh forget those or put in some new ones.
Bill, just to clarify, the most recent one, I believe, is twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, yeah. So it's, it's, it's two, it's two and uh we're, we're just gonna, we're, we're not gonna do much else except look at the uh the implementation of uh long, long-term plans for that. One of the ones we've probably, what it is, uh, it's been there since the beginning is having a bathroom there. So I mean, we can leave that in there, but that was supposed to be done a couple of years ago, but I don't know if the, we can do that. Uh, the cost and also just the logistics of it. Um, but we're gonna look at other, other things that, the, the main one is, is the road, getting the road to the dock. Uh and trying to make that totally accessible. So that's the, that's another expense that's huge. Like uh anyway, we're looking at that and then we also looked a little bit at the with the Canal Basin Square, because it was, they were, we were asked to look at Canal Basin Square as well and that that's uh, that needs a lot of work, yes. Even though that's not a part per se, but it's uh, we're looking at the, what can be done. Uh and there's some efforts going on with that.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Heisen? Um, I don't guess the, and Mayor, Emergency Preparedness Committee has met?
Yeah, we, we did.
Did you meet?
So right now, as of this point, there will be any meetings. We've got, uh, they've spent a little bit, uh, issues trying to get some other people to uh find a a schedule to everybody, because the other people already have my free access commitment. But as of now, he's uh, he's working on uh, find uh, get some assistance with uh wants to assist the, uh, by the county with the E P's uh, emergency preparedness committee. And he also wants to try to collaborate with that Foodvanna, Buckingham and Albemarle to work together. And he's also currently working with a future plan for the Emergency Preparedness Committee. And uh he's working with the, getting some uh shirt training done. And he wants, some of the things he wants to focus on is uh to assist with uh evacuation issues. And uh clean up after any type of disaster, flood or whatever. And uh also wants to uh do some event planning for the Fourth of July. And also brought up the, uh, need to fund it for the training material for the uh committee and head for the second year.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Towns?
How many people are in your committee?
How many people? I don't know, right now, it's, but we, yeah, and I believe Mr. Mr. Kir- Mr. Kirchlin, don't we?
Four, four people?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly. I don't, I don't have a name.
Okay, I just wonder. I guess there's no requirement for how many committees, but I always think five, five's always a good number, I think.
Okay, appreciate that. Um, Mr. Whitley is events and he's in Colorado. Uh Javier, you wanna give a treasurer's report of some forms?
You know, so I'll keep it brief. We'll have discussions of uh fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, re-creation. And fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, uh budget preparation. That would be all. We'll talk later about budget.
Okay, any questions for Javier on anything treasurer related? All right, um I forgot to mention under Chamber of Commerce, we're planning a wine, wine festival. Uh probably at the Farmer's Market Pavilion, or Canal Basin Square in the fall. That's uh something the chamber is working on right now. Uh first of all, for my report, let me thank Mr. Payne, the Vice Mayor, for handling things and keeping all the ship afloat in, in April. Um, uh sure he um enjoyed his time at the helm. So.
Then we should get home.
That's okay. I do appreciate it. I didn't see, I thought, I looked at the uh meeting video and I, it looks like it uh things went pretty well and uh thank you. I don't have, didn't have any doubts if you couldn't handle it. I mean, you, you've been in this game almost as long as I have, so.
Game of life, you mean?
This game.
But thanks so much.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I didn't, didn't have any worries while I was away that things weren't gonna get done that needed to be done. I didn't. So anyhow, um as the chief alluded to, uh, I've sat in on some interviews for prospective police officer. Um Javier and I met with Chief Eggleston from the Albemarle County Fire Department. And he told us that they are going to put an engine at the Rescue Squad Building. And uh cited some facts and figures and response times and uh probably one of our, our biggest concerns, we don't want them to look at moving in and taking over the fire operation. Because we have a really good dedicated group of volunteers. And they, if they're coming with an engine in the area, which is gonna enhance response times, but at the same time, they, we need to kind of work together and they, they, they need to understand that. We also explained to them that the volunteers are responsible for keeping the water out of town when we have a flood event. And if we didn't have volunteers to do that, the county is gonna have to have paid people do that. So it's free to see what happens with that one.
Can we uh speak on that, Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Can we speak on that?
Uh, I'd rather wait until next week if you want to in the public forum. That was just, it was not a real, you know, comprehensive meeting, just so what their plans were and we highly suggested that they consider working closely with you guys and not coming in and trying to take over things.
Will we address that with them, Wayne?
Sir.
Will we talk to the board above, Wayne, if they about that?
Is it on that agenda? Or we uh have to get it on that agenda?
It would have to be approved by both the board of supervisors and town councils to do that. There's an opportunity maybe to discuss about uh the volunteer fire department, Russell Levy. And discuss that nuance, uh as the mayor stated, that if you're, if you have reduced participation of rescues in the fire department. They've always been patriotic, I promise for us historically for what I understand.
So we need to see if we can get, get it on their agenda?
Yes. We would have, have during the meeting, both the board supervisor and uh town council to vote on it. So there's just that maneuver.
Okay. Let's keep that at the top of our priority list. Uh, I've already mentioned that with the cell tower people, uh, uh, the consultants on cell tower contracts, uh, had a museum board meeting Saturday, then I went up to Yancy uh for an interesting um get together where the community of Porters, the Porters community, which is basically south of Esmont. Um, it's, it's an old established community and a team from UVA uh doing research into what they call Free Towns, where uh, uh it was a, a community of emancipated, free, black uh citizens, had their own community, their own businesses, they were working things. And Porters was a community that pretty much came before Esmont community got established. So they're doing all this research, uh, because one of the professors is gonna write a book about Free Towns. But it was uh very interesting to sit and listen to some of the uh stories from, from the people who lived, uh, lived in the Porters area. And that's basically it for me. Any questions? Mr. Bowling, anything?
Mr. Mayor, let me ask you this question. This is, this might be the person there. Was there any mention of a term from that timeframe that that's referred to as Freedom Day? You know, and then it.
I didn't hear that. All I heard was Free Town. It's called Porters, was a Free Town, and this professor has mapped a whole bunch of Free Towns around central Virginia.
Okay.
Okay, so it's like a community that has its independent, i- i- it has its own barber, it has its own bakery, it has its own blacksmith, it has its own automobile repair.
The, the reason, the reason I'll, I'll tell you why I'm asking this, in the, actually in the historical touring stuff that I'm involved in. One of the things that happens, so when General Sheridan goes from the Shenandoah Valley in March of eighteen sixty-five, he goes into Charlottesville on March the fourth, eighteen sixty-five. And that's the day that basically the enslaved people are freed in Charlottesville. He then comes to Charlotte. He comes through Scottsville. He's here from the sixth to the tenth, doing a couple of things in the, in an apomatics. When he ends up up there, there's a Freedom Day over there. And kind of what I'm wondering is do we have historical information about people that were possibly freed here then? But anyways, that's, that's why I asked that term.
Ed Brooks up there and I and some others are working on a Juneteenth uh celebration probably over at Union Baptist Church. And something, how, somehow to recognize Dr. Ross Barnett. Who is into, Dr. Barnett uh was a black educator, and she's buried at Union. And she used to, at one point in her life, she was the president of the University of Houston. So, um.
I was actually talking about her to somebody today, actually.
So, yeah. Anyhow, uh, Mr. Bowling, anything?
Uh, I, I sent you a letter this, today, this morning on uh construction sidewalks, and I prepared it this evening. Talk about that if you want to. And I realize that, but I'm gonna talk. Talk about that if you want to. And I realize that when I'm going to talk to you, I'm going to uh, be referring to uh, uh, ordinances, what have you, which wouldn't make much sense to you unless you had, had seen them ahead of time. And maybe they don't make sense after seeing them, but I think they do. I'd be happy to discuss it at any length or, or uh, that you want me to on the issue. Uh, basically you have an ordinance already that, that pretty short, sweet says, um, uh, nobody's to obstruct anything on a sidewalk. And it's left to the uh, judgment and a good common sense of the police department and uh, uh, the town administrator and the, the town mayor to determine what constitutes an obstruction. That uh, has its uh, drawbacks in that it's, wait a minute, what's, what's obstruction mean? And uh, but it has benefits because it's short and sweet and uh, as, as long as you've got people in, in position that, that can exercise uh, judgment and good common sense, it should work out okay. I also included an example of an ordinance which gave you a definition of what obstruction is, which is much more inclusive. Um, if you look at that um, uh, closely, you'll see that the, uh, the problem perhaps is it, uh, it, it pretty much defines what you can have and what you can't have in this uh, abbreviated definition of what an obstruction is, but uh, more or less you could find yourself in, in, in arguments as to what constitutes an obstruction and what isn't on little piggly things that you don't have time for. And, and then I kind of laid out the enforcement mechanism for you. Uh, what you have now is a class four misdemeanor, the maximum you can charge for that is two hundred fifty dollars. Well, if you're like you and me, two hundred fifty dollars means something, so you're going to pay attention to it. Um, uh, the uh, you may at some point in the future want, you have a problem with bicycles riding on the sidewalks, with uh, skateboards riding on the sidewalks, with uh, um, um, scooters riding on sidewalks, delivery vehicle, uh, uh, with of all things, it appears that some uh, college towns now have uh, concerns with robotic delivery men for pizza parlors riding on their sidewalks. Uh, but uh, I don't know. That's, if you're all to determine if, if there's a real problem in enforcing those kinds of items. The trouble with the specific ordinance which allows you to enforce for bicycles and skateboards and uh, uh, and, and scooters, both motorized and electric and uh, I suppose miscellaneous like a kind of such as robotic delivery men, is it, um, it, it allows, it, it says you can enforce it, but then it says you can only charge a fifty dollar fine in the town in Scottsville. Is it a fifty dollar fine is, is going to cause you financial uh, worry if, if, when you send a police officer, if he asks you go to court to enforce it, uh, you'll never get your fifty bucks back. You're not going to get your two hundred fifty bucks back either, the cost of going to court and back. But if you're going to have an ordinance with penalties, you need to enforce it. So that's something else I threw in. I don't know if I'm making sense, what I'm talking about. It all sounds kind of simple. Yeah, we don't want anybody obstructing our sidewalks. But, but then, you know, what's the scope of your problem and how do you want to address it? And how, how diligent do you want to be by, by doing this?
But, well, I was concerned about this more for, for uh, aesthetic purpose. You know, look, the, uh, we have a historic town and, you know, tables and chairs and planters are fine, but when you see trash cans or maybe the bargain boxes out there, like a sidewalk ornament, it doesn't fit into what the town should be. I'm not sure if that's some structure or just uh, or just unsightly.
Well, I, I, I get my cane foot pole out when we get into aesthetic concerns, because each man's aesthetic is another.
Right, right.
Digital buggies. But uh, certainly you can uh, you can put the word out about what's acceptable. Clenders are acceptable, but, but general items are not, through giving your somehow general instructions to your town administrator as to.
So it's a big discretion of a town administrator to.
Well, or your release chief, let's not check, he has pretty good judgment and um, and let him determine.
Yeah.
Let him determine. Really, what you're talking about is it an obstruction to free passage on your sidewalks. That's the issue.
The obstruction is just unsightly. That's what I'm saying. Yeah, some things are, are, they're in your way. Other things just don't look nice.
The code section, this is not an architectural review issue. You can address that in your architectural review board in the historical district.
Oh, really?
If you want to. But uh, this is in a, this is obstruction of sidewalks and the legislation that what, what you in, 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 engaging that activity is, is, is not living on a steady viewpoint. It's just, it's a curve of obstruction.
Right, right. And we do have.
Passage of sidewalks.
We do have a handicap and elderly, you know, trying to walk and they can't get through there. So that is a concern.
So, so there it is.
Okay. Up in the air.
No, you can say, you decide what you want to do and do it.
Would, would, would it, would it be making, uh, typing up the ordinance or just reporting it?
Well, I, I mean, you could, you can make an ordinance as broad as you want to or as narrow as you want to. You remember, if you're going to change an ordinance, you've got to advertise it for public areas. And that costs you a bunch of money to do it and so forth and so on. I'm sorry. You know, that's a, that's a concern.
Okay.
And a, a, an issue comes forward, but uh, part of it may just be determining it, what constitutes an obstruction.
Well, right, okay.
The best thing to do is just approach the uh, obstructionist and
There you go.
And say, you know, look, this doesn't really look nice. Can you, can you put it somewhere else?
Yeah.
And if, then if you don't get any satisfaction, then you, you take a next job.
Yeah, and some of it's easy, right? You know, people, people put their trash cans out there, send your trash pick up, right?
No, it's their permanent structure.
Uh, they're.
Well, there's some, one was there for a long time and uh.
Right, so you don't have a problem with trash cans.
Uh, I think they, there might be still one there, but that's, but, but we have our own trash cans in town.
Okay, but that's, that's a big problem in sidewalks. Okay, that's, that's the baby. People will put their trash, they put them out and then they don't put them back in. You don't have that concern.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Bowling? Mr. Town Administrator, anything you need to add?
No, we previously discussed the planning mission to consult towns, only I haven't for that town administrator.
All right, um, item three, new topic. Um, Mr. Payne and I had some conversation the other day about the emergency preparedness committee and um, I did not realize it hadn't met for several months and he was, he, his concern, which is certainly a just concern, is that, do we need it? So what I'd like to do is ask Mr. Payne to kind of lead his, this discussion off about the emergency preparedness committee. Is it necessary that we have it? What has it done to help the town? Uh, what can it do that it's not doing? So it floors yours, sir.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Um, the, the legal is formed, um, former town councilor Moles was really upset about the, the river calamity at East Palatino, Ohio. Uh, and having worked for that same company, I was a little concerned too. Um, it was a disaster out there and it weighed heavily on her. And she could just see that happening here in Scottsville. And we do have a river that comes through here at Elmo. Um, I have taken part in, in drills that uh, involved that, beyond the river here. And I won't sit here and tell you the number of agencies and officers that were there, but it was a rule for it. So uh, there are, there are plans in place. And then uh, there was a concern about the, the town businesses and residents being properly numbered to aid um, first response, fire, rescue police, et cetera, to, to uh, find buildings in the region. Uh, firstly, I think it was, it's, it's really up to the, to the owners of these establishments to, to make sure that, you know, they're properly numbered. Uh, we came up with the blue signs that you've seen around and uh, I used to make these in the rescue squad. And definitely answer for some people, especially the more rural part of the town. Um, in Scottsdale, I think it would be an asshole. That's just my opinion. So I guess we lift that up. Um, if you want, it's town will be helpful and, and hope you get one of these. I uh, I wondered about the direction of this committee because when it started out, I thought it was um, an advisory committee that would, you know, make recommendations to council, uh, if necessary. Uh, some of the things that Walter mentioned, I think go beyond the scope and ability of this committee. Uh, we've got the town administrator that works with Albemarle County. Uh, they're, I guess you, what, what is the title? Uh, deputy chief, I believe, and he.
Emergency manager?
Yeah, deputy chief of the emergency, uh, Albemarle Emergency Management. And that's, that's the contact with the town. There of course, Chief Jenkins has his contacts by the portman, I'm sure. So I, the committee that doesn't get actively involved with any type of response. Um, give me a second to think of. I have something on my mind. But anyway, while I was on the committee, I had to drop out of the COZL obligations. Uh, we've never had any more than four members. And we've got uh, Mr. Maxwell and then Mr. Town with the Lake Committee now. I don't know who else. Um, if it hasn't been met in five months, I don't believe that's essential. Uh, as far as for calamities in town, you've got the old radio, you've got TV, weather channels abound, you've got NOAA. You can get, you know, alerts on your smartphone or have you have it set up. You can get a, an apple FEMA. You can get an apple with the Virginia Office of Emergency Preparedness. Um, I'm back to the Albemarle County Emergency Preparedness, come on myself. Uh, just that, all the resources you need to be prepared for the emergency are there, even, even the um, insurance companies are putting them out now. Uh, I get alerts from our insurance company. We're coming up on, um, hurricane season here, probably starts in about a week. Uh, we know what the rains do for the hurricanes here, but it's fall, it's cold and dangerous. Uh, the committees are not going to react to that. It's going to be up to the, the emergency preparedness groups, federal, state and local. So I don't want to see this committee overstep its bounds. And I believe that the information that is provided by this committee is secondhand, if possible, of course, and so it's not real time. And the one emergency that we have had this year that was statewide, um, the person responsible uh, for notifying the public, if you will, could not because they were uh, out of power. So you've got to depend on more than one or two people to, to manage something like that, you know, to take on them. That, as you mentioned, personally, um, I don't think it's needed.
You know, uh, we, we feel with public safety with the government service and maybe they, they could just uh, join that or, or fold into that or, or we support occasionally the public service, because it, it was reported as redundant. Um, you know, and they support public service. So, I mean, maybe they could just occasionally come to the meeting like, you know, like Chamber of Commerce comes here or Scan comes here and just says, hey, we're, we're working on this or I guess uh.
Let me take, let me take a different opinion than the two of you guys. First of all, I appreciate your expressing your thoughts. I think one of the things that's important as a town is that we recognize that every volunteer who comes and serves brings a different gift. So when that committee was formulated with Eileen, who had a certain vision for it, the way that they served over time morphed. And I, I think it's wonderful that you're interested in taking over the leadership of it. And I think you should be given time to be able to do that. Things take time to develop. We have people like Jack who've invested an enormous amount of energy in the town and frankly, has been underappreciated for that in what he's done. And as he's been underappreciated for what he's done, it's been something that's been very disappointing to me personally, but hold on just for a second. So, so.
What he nominated and that shows.
Let me, let me just, let me just say, so I feel like he's been underappreciated. I do think you make a good point that there's clear delineation about what the fire department does, what the rescue squad does, what the police force does. And I think you raise a legitimate point saying, if we have an emergency preparedness committee, we don't want them to be assuming a role that would be something they couldn't do. At the same time, I think most of what I'm advocating for at the moment would be give the new head of the committee time to determine what new direction the committee would take. One of the things that we also often find in the town is that John Snotty said this to me years ago, and I think that, I think it's been, been always been a wise advice, is you have to champion something. And for a number of years, the parks was something I championed. And at the moment, I'm not involved with the parks. It's another group of people that are doing a job with that. But we want to find ways that we allow volunteers to find their way, so to speak, to be helpful. And the last thing you want to do is, is to, because of your own personal opinion, say, well, I don't see how it works and it doesn't work for me, so through you, because it doesn't work.
I don't think I've said.
Well, I think what you've insinuated has been that way.
I'll, that's what I have not insinuated anything. I'll say what I've said.
You did.
And don't, I don't appreciate, you know, someone putting words about that.
I'm, I'm summing what I think you've said.
Okay.
Molly.
Let me, let me just say something, correct you a little bit. We don't have a leader for that committee. He's the liaison. It's got to be a, and if we don't have a liaison uh, with a uh, town counselor that can attend those meetings, then that committee ceases to exist.
We're in a position of allowing a committee time to find its, its way is what I'm simply suggesting.
But I'm just saying, we, we don't.
I mean, there were, you know, there were times we didn't have and didn't need a government services committee.
Right, we always, we always, we always had a town counselor as liaison and you got to have that. And maybe it's the time they meet and if he can't be there, but I, I don't think there's the interest that's in there. And like I said, it's, and it seems to be redundant because, you know, we have the police, we have the fire. But I, I would invite them to come to the government service committee meeting and then talk about issues. And maybe they, we could incorporate them in that way. That way when, we won't have two separate committees and they won't be running and, but they wouldn't counter to each other.
And Dan, I'm, I'm not attacking the individual. I'm saying this committee, the way I see it is not needed. I've made this statement in the past. I'm not attacking the individual. I haven't mentioned names. You appoint someone else, so.
Okay, I think the easiest way to settle this is if you so desire, have Javier put on the agenda for the next Monday's meeting, a uh, discussion to uh, eliminate or do away with the emergency preparedness committee and then we can take a vote on it.
Yeah, I, I'm going to take a bit of reason from what uh, Councilman Payne said and uh, Mr. Victor and Mr. Heisen. Uh, back in the saying when the committee was started, it was going to be started as an advisory thing. So, yes, I'm sure maybe that was their original intention was for it to be an advisory committee. Find ways to help keep the town involved and see what we can do and that. At the same time, um, I think we benefit, we do have two top five people that go on me in the event of an emergency. I mean, when it really comes down to it, who, who, who wants to show the county or the state or, I mean, in the event of an emergency? I mean, who wants, I mean.
What kind of emergency? You're talking fire or flooding?
Well, any type, any type of.
We do.
Exactly. So you would have uh, Exactly, okay, so you would have uh this, that's where you would have um authority over the county of Alamo.
Yes.
And I just know, maybe we can just look into double check, uh find out all the avenues and everything. Uh I'm, you know, good to. And back to what you were saying, volunteer, that was really, I mean, anytime anybody wants to volunteer, put it out of town or any of that. Yeah, I'm not a turn away of volunteer work, but there are all certain things we, there are certain steps that we need to take. Now, so, but um if the committee was. Set up as an advisory, maybe we can do that. From uh from a very short meeting that I have had, it seems like it's it's it may be a little bit more than. In a in a vibration, right, working collaborating the other night. Other agents, there's a lot of work involved. More detail.
Well, any councilperson has a right to make any motion they want to during any regular meeting, so. We can put this on the agenda for next week and if you. If anybody wants to make a motion to uh change, do away with, leave it as it is, they can make that motion. Okay, so just make sure you get Javier to put that on.
While me.
Well, you brought it up to start with, that's why it's on here. So put on the agenda for next week, continue discussion on emergency. Okay. And then at that point, if anybody wants to make a motion, we'll be talking about it, okay? All right, Javier.
Yes.
Item four A.
Yes, so it's uh that council put the total, the recommended budget. Uh the state chief seven pages. So um we've been discussing the budget on and off of January uh with town council. Uh for the sake of brevity there in the work session, I'll just update on um recent changes since the March. Updated projections. Uh one of the inclusions is uh updates to payroll and payroll liabilities. Um we made changes, uh we closing hour made changes to the police department. Sales more competitive, and then additional item you'll see not only in the police department admin. Um capital is the purchase of police uh truck that uh. Chief Jenkins was speaking about previously. Um specifically with that, you'll also, I started with, it's expensive. In regards to broad strokes, the revenue, um you'll see um changes in um. The town line increased um due to reimbursement on the center. And then additionally, um. An increase in a half point on the trans occupancy and meal stacks that was discussed by council previously. So those uh those figures were all uh were discussed back in April, I believe. Uh but uh this is a new budget that actually shows those twenty. So you'll see that under the town line, uh small increase, so for your. Granted occupancy, you'll see it bump up from about fifteen thousand to sixteen thousand five hundred. And then for the meal stacks, you'll see an increase from two ninety two this year. To three eight even, which it would have been a little closer to three hundred, so. Point increase, to give you perspective. Um beyond that, um I recently made the other thing that discussed with uh to the bar, let me see where to. Uh we're working on that, we're still working on that second uh bid for. The levy concrete, levy walls and pump house ceiling on the concrete. Uh so hopefully we'll have that uh this month, to give you a little bit of updated, um like everyone here. Something a little bit more competitive, uh wouldn't hurt on the bottom line. Um beyond that, um what you have here due to um. This outsized demand for capital projects is a fiscal year budget in which uh we will be using their reserves. On the case of this capital project, um as we discussed last month, uh. Town staff did uh. Uh encourage and consideration American power for the same reason, to build up a eventual reserve, use some of that. Potential one-time rainfall for critical letting support, but then also, um as always, we're all the way to be careful. Um we've said before, don't have a sugar rush, and we outlined before, uh but that is true. And then the um second consideration also was to um set up some kind of process administratively. What she could use to guarantee funds we have this year. And then slowly over the months for for years, just um take a portion of your revenue and pay it back into the same account. So you can almost make a commitment against yourself, um you know. In the same way, you can say, I would put a jar on the top of uh on the top of my uh. Bridge and put all my loose change in there, because I want to save a little. A rainy day or something, um those. Those are just recommendations about policies, but at the end of the day, um. This includes the recommendations from uh from the council members and then the priorities we see in regards to capital improvements. Again, I I I don't need to remind that most of the council has been here many uh years enough, but our deadline for uh approval. Next fiscal year budget is June thirtieth. The timing in regards to public uh hearing notices. While using our regularly scheduled meetings would require a call for a public hearing the next regular session. Providing enough time to have a public hearing during June sixteenth. Uh regular session across uh and then approval or a possible consideration of. Consideration of what type of budget.
Javier, just if I could ask you a question, since you're in a unique position. Jumping off the ship. But as you jump off the ship, do you? If you were to explain to people who are looking at this, what would you say the biggest difference looking at the. Upcoming budget is versus this last year, like in simple terms, and what, how do you, how do you understand the difference?
I think we have a lot of uncertainty about what inflation looks like. Um we have uh tried to stay as glad as we can during my time in regards to tax increases. Um but I I think that the levy is an omen of our aging capital infrastructure. Then we'll have outsized needs in upcoming years. Um I'll, as you said, jumping ship, I think it's a very good idea eventually to consider a legal state tax. Small portion that you dedicate that primarily to capital maintenance. Um and then a small portion towards capacity building, uh as I leave uh. I I sincerely do believe you need a third staff member, administrator staff now. Um you want to afford opportunities for us to do uh uh better maintenance, better capital uh. Capital payments, better apartment. Um and as we start maxing out, we maxed out our business license, our cigarette license. Uh trans occupancy above two percent, you have to use it for tourism. Uh so we budget appropriately with our events towards that. Um you you're running out of levers to fall and uh I went out and. Uh charitably to all our nearest tax owners, um discuss with them possible airport. Increase, and I heard of uh, you don't always get consensus in the job. And that was one of the, I heard everybody respectfully say that they're feeling like they're kind of getting scooped on in. Um at seven points, you're you're matching um. Charlottesville and it's not lost on me in the last three and a half years, we've increased it to a half points. Um uh what is it, half point right around COVID, maybe before, and then it was a two point. In twenty one or twenty two under MAP, I remember distinctly. Um you might not have reached that point, but uh. You know, you have plenty of people to say that eight dollar sandwich turns into ten dollars. Once they're done with the meal stacks and the sales tax. It's not an easy decision, but um I kind of want to lay all the parts out uh for council. This hasn't been the first time a council discussed these elements about it, either in public meeting or with personally.
Were we thinking of having a special meeting to kind of go with this line by line, or are we going to just go? Give us, give you a, uh since, I mean, there's a couple of things that stand out in here, you went up two thousand, five thousand, one thousand, two thousand. Five thousand, and and it would be good to um see where why that happens or. Uh I think some of them I know, but like healthcare seem to really don't, but I but I'm wondering if we want to have a a. A a special meeting on budget.
Well, if we can hammer it out at our next work session, we won't have to have a special meeting.
Okay, oh, next select in in June?
Yeah, because that'll give us time to advertise.
Yeah, that could be that, that could be the session.
I I my question is, um. The candidates that we have interviewed for the vacancies coming up on the police department. None of them are certified, they have to go to the academy. So how does that reduction in not having to pay a full-time certified officer fit into this?
I think I need to talk to Greg about.
You don't have to pay the salary. And then starting salary would be fifty one, fifty two thousand versus what we approved the fifty one. So just they'll start.
You still have to pay him a salary, even though he's going to the academy.
Sure.
The full salary. Okay.
With benefits.
All right.
So we're not, the the only cost saving later that we will have is, like I said. Burst down fifty eight one versus fifty one, fifty two, that will start with officer that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Uh we would want to look at when's the possible starting date and make sure we capture that, either in re- reappropriation for this year or next year. Um I will point out is, even if you were to use that June work session, you would need to make a um. Uh a public hearing announcement in regards to the budget itself and any passive increases. Uh that you consider, so there is a a decision avoid uh for next week.
Uh so so the new officer, so the old, the officer that's leaving leaves June sixth. And then the new officer, depending on polygraph, psychological, medical, when they would come forward. Uh sometime in the mid to late June. And then we'll get ready for the academy and send them on, so there's not going to be a lot of budget savings on this far salary. Just not going to be.
Okay. And any other questions?
The academy's paid each year in July first. We pay for five officers, so the the academy cost is seven hundred twenty dollars per annually per officer, right? Be appropriate for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we already budget for that, um it's it's going to be a little less in salary. It's not going to be as much as the policy would currently have. It's not, the, I guess the question I had, how we just uh meet here that there's a. In this audit, looks like there was a surplus of fifty one, one sixty seven, is that included into this number here?
No, so.
Opposed budget or not?
This will update next week, um shortly to see is the categories they use for the requirements they have. Really wonky to try to fit into the capital views, so what I weigh down until is until. Many of these are booked, and then I can probably report in the east and we update the twenty three, twenty four. So that seventeen thousand in twenty three, twenty four will shift over to uh a growth of fifty one uh next week.
So that's sixty three.
Oh, so that's sixty three or change?
No, it's seventeen from twenty, twenty three, twenty four.
Oh, okay.
But it's going to be a total include, they're like fifty one, one sixty seven, right?
No, from seventeen to fifty, uh fifty one, sorry.
Yeah, from seventeen to fifty one, so thirty thousand.
Yeah. For twenty three, twenty four. No.
Doesn't affect it.
Well, I think that's still a bit too, but you know, we've, the last three or four years, we've had a a reserve or uh. The annual growth reserve uh in a positive, and this this year it's sixty three thousand negative. Um how is that, uh how do we get, do we have to get that to zero for about zero?
You could run it down sitting, use your reserves.
Oh.
But again, uh.
Oh, yeah, you can reserve the the like the.
But of course, it goes, I'm going to say dogs, you don't want to keep doing that.
Yeah.
Uh and then, like I said before, I just don't know what other levers you have. Um and I will be clear, I do not waste. Like, I have been, I got careful direction from you guys in retirement, and I've been adhering to that. Um salaries are just increasing, everything's increasing. Health, healthcare is hitting up.
That's a big one, that's a big one, I noticed that.
We could through next year, uh responsibility on it, and then you make uh staff. Staffing, uh you have less leverage, you're you're less competitive with the worst healthcare plan, or with a not as generous healthcare. Um but we're running out of levers, and I do think it's easy for me to say. But real estate tax, you're you're running out of levers and meals tax. People have been very polite, but very sincere, they're concerned about the pitch on, he can be increasing it slowly, that big two point jump was really felt. Um uh I don't know, uh bottom line, you might be able to sell the um. The way people feel it was.
Yeah.
Effective.
Yeah.
They weren't affected, I guess, would be the better thing.
I do have a question, um since this. Now, paying for the training and whoever you do hire. This was paid in training, is there anything that we're getting returned, I said, you know, we're paying for your trainer, they're going to guarantee you one or two years. Contract that can't go anywhere, you know, and some places do that, if they offer you a trainer, you have to stay for a certain period of time, because. Once they finish the training, they can go anywhere. And it's they, you. So we did, you can, you can enable for us.
We we went through this.
Yeah, I think we did.
And you kind of laid it out. Right, we laid out all the alternatives, and what did you, what did you conclude?
Well, the conclusion is, Mr. Uh, it's the only time we can do a contract and the contracts are enforceable if we're doing um. Uh higher loan bonuses, now that the higher loan bonuses are something that we as a town. Could uh implement a contract for what we want to do. The salary is just part of the hiring process, sending them to the academy, getting them trained. Uh I've talked to the Charlottesville Police Department, the and the police departments that actually do contracts, and it's. All based on their salary bonuses. And because we don't do one, the contract.
What what you can't do is clawback salary, I can say, aren't you?
That's a very good way of.
And because then what you're doing is what you're trying to, you're essentially doing a legal wage candidate.
It's a sign of courage in the state of United. Yeah, it's it's tough, and it's definitely a gamble. You know, this is the first time that I know of, and it's pretty, my time being here, that we've ever had to look at sending someone to be. But this will be the first time, for sure. That's why I'm hoping that you pick the right person. Taking our time going through the process, but you know, there are no guarantees, I wish I could tell you.
So you hear about a look out, is it art thing that, well, we've 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 got covered, but they're doing that through the bonus process. Where they say, well, you, if you stay with us two years, we guarantee you the next to the next dollars. Hey, that's inhibition to what you've already been paid during salary, that you can do. It's a real dilemma, it's not just kind of scott.
It's a national issue with them.
Yeah.
So you want to discuss this some more next Monday, uh and you come up with a. Bit of a revised version?
Yeah, and then I'd be prudent uh for any council member, ask any questions, reach out to me this week.
That will be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other budget question? All right, um Javier. And I discussed the, basically, the the candidates that we have for town administrator. Basically, the the candidates that we have for town administrator upcoming vacancy. And what I've asked him to do is put the list together. And all their resumes and send all of you gentlemen that tomorrow or as soon as possible. And then I would like to have, uh, we have our council meeting next week. But on Thursday of next week, the twenty second, I'd like to have a special session so we can just start going through all these. Resumes after you've had a chance to read them and kind of rate the candidates for, you know, on the scale of one to ten and. Uh, see what we've got to work with. And then we will. Take it the next.
Try to get this selling.
Yeah, because some of these, you know, some candidates. Not, and some of them are going to be way up here, some are way down there. Let's wait to see what we did, got to work with. So he'll be sending that out hopefully tomorrow. And, um. Javier, you have anything else before we go into the uh closed session?
No, uh, I'll share tomorrow the list of uh all the resumes.
Yeah.
Uh, sixteen.
Oh, shit, yeah. Do we need to do that parking thing? I thought you were going to bring that up, Javier.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we could. That's the only thing that we did is.
Yeah, right. Let's let's do that.
You had it on me, but I thought it was going to be in the meeting. Oh, so we need to talk about that Valley Street Main Street parking issue?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I would do that before we on session.
Yeah.
I'll send out all the resumes to turn to you in any mail so you can review and then wrong set uh next Thursday. Um, and then Melanie will be assisted on also, especially on some levels of justice. Getting a.
Well, I do have one thing to say, and I have to thank Javier. We, the audit that we went over for twenty three, twenty four, we were point zero, zero, one percent difference than RFC. We were exactly five hundred dollars different. Which is as close as you can be to being perfect. So I, this is the first year that he and I work together, so.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Good job. It's very good.
Very aggressive. Um, and to the point is, uh, I was not due to that. I'll put it that way. I was potentially not, that's not my forte case. So when I look for somebody, um, I was wearing caps that I wanted to build for the town. I appreciate it.
Your pleasure.
Um. Beyond that, uh, I I guess. Right, we could just kind of bounce off. Uh, we discussed last month about zoning in regards to parking, especially within the historical related district. Um, and then part of what I sent to you as email was to discuss if there's any aspects on police department side in regards to um. Uh, parking for Valley, but for for me, it was very clear uh what authority and what discretion I have as county administrator. Um, and then how that intersects with special use permits and also with underlying settling. Essentially, Bill, what were the questions?
Well, I I think I I'm not sure what the question I have, but I've well, I've heard from others is is uh. Is it real clear? Has ordinance been updated about the parking? I know we changed it a few years ago, but there's. Anybody could park anywhere for for any length of time. Is that is that correct? There's no, so somebody had mentioned the other day, there was a a truck parked there for three days. In front of a store. I don't know, but the if somebody does that, there's nothing we can do, right?
As long as it's not parked illegally.
Right, but if it's if it's taken up a business space, there is no business space, so to speak, is it? And there's no loading space, so to speak.
Right.
So anybody could put, and as far as a resident, um. If you're a renter, you could park on the street as well, because I've heard there was years ago that this.
Except if there is a S U P.
Okay, and say which S U Ps do we have that with?
The yeah, Scottsfield Lofts, right.
Scottsfield Lofts, which are.
That's uh beyond the school, so like right over.
Oh, here, on this side of the street.
Yes.
Okay.
That these apartments on this side.
Okay.
So so remember, Bill, so remember, Bill, that's a zoning issue.
Okay.
That is not an. Police department enforcement issue. Uh, chapter twelve of the state code really does govern. Parking, what cities, towns, counties, that type of stuff. So there's a whole list in that chapter there, uh forty six point two twelve twenty.
Uh huh.
Really highlights what a town, city or county's responsibilities are.
Right.
As far as parking goes.
Right.
And there's a laundry list under chapter twelve that. That is in state code that allows police officers to enforce parking issues.
Okay.
Would have to be in town code ordinance, not zoning. Police department doesn't enforce zoning.
Right.
Issues. That's a town administrator's job. Police department enforces the law that you all act as town council or state.
Okay. So 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 what's your understanding of any enforcement of parking?
The way the parking is here, you know, when I first started here, council and police department worked very hard to get the parking to where it is right now.
Right.
And you know, there may be some minor issues, but there aren't issues and parking issues that they like we used to have. People are pretty compliant with the parks.
Right.
Uh, for the most part. Every once in a while, we have to stop and give a warning, you know, and ask them to move, but you know, how do they ever write a ticket anymore? Once in a while.
Uh huh.
I was writing all the time, not not much anymore. Um. You know, I'm not sure. What what council is looking for from the police department as far as the parking goes.
No, I think it's just a a matter of communication and clarity for for businesses and residents of of what uh what are the rules and regulations? You have one there? Can she speak?
Make it quick.
I'm more than happy to answer you and you can read it. I don't even have to speak on it.
And they turn, I I wonder if it's true.
It's on your website, does it today?
Oh, give it to me.
Just leave, give it to Javier and he can make copies for us.
Good copy. And maybe maybe it's the same one you said, uh.
Multiple sections that refer to this. So it does best by your time website for your county ordinances about commercial spaces and what's required is what you guys want. It also specifies for residential off street, commercial design required, off street parking, residential desert fire rate. It is on your website currently because I'll turn it off now.
Okay, thank you for that.
I asked that council review the emails I sent, um, reviewing our zone.
We we think you need to discuss openly rather than just council.
Well, right now it's not on the agenda. It's not on tonight's agenda, George, so we're not going any further with parking tonight, okay?
This was on the agenda as of last meeting. It was put off for tonight.
It's not on the work session agenda.
That's oversight there because. The acting mayor asked for it to be put off tonight's agenda.
Well. If you show me a sign that says no parking and there's a car there, the chief's going to put a ticket on.
It's not a sign. It's not a fault. It's not chief's problem. It's the town administrator's problem and the town council's problem.
To.
Because you're not part following your ordinances.
Well, you were in charge when we took all the two hour parking signs down.
I didn't not take. No, I we were, we did that with the. Don't concern us, you know, the guy, sorry.
Well, look. You're making a big issue out of nothing.
Well, it is. It is something. You have businesses that can't have people park anywhere close. My daughter has huge piles of product that have to be carried long distances.
And you can't, you can't let somebody park in the in um beside your building for ten minutes while they load up that stuff? He's not going to give you a ticket.
And it's in force.
Have you written tickets on people that wanted to come and load up? There's heavy equipment.
The unfortunate thing, Mayor, is we we talk about this, about Lindsay Street and.
Lindsay Street, that's where we started.
Council and the police department all buried zero pilots on Lindsay Street. And that's exactly what it's been, zero pilots. What we try to do is not just with Kimberly's businesses, all of the businesses, Amici's, any trucks that are coming in here to unload. We try to make sure that e- even if they're parking the other line or something like that, we're going to give them fifteen, twenty minutes to take to get it unloaded. And we have been doing that, but Lindsay Street has been a zero tolerance since council resolved the parking issues on there. If we allow it, it's going to be complete chaos and you would just want to pull signs up. I get calls, the first time there's a vehicle parked in that street, I get a phone call. Day off, holiday, it's not bad. If there's a car in there, you can bet your sleep.
I know that.
I'm getting a phone call. Absolutely get a phone.
Okay, well, you can't have every business have a private parking space in front of it for that private business.
That's not what's required. The requirement is the residents that are parking in the streets need to park off street according to the ordinance. Has nothing to do with our police department, has to do with county administrator.
Most of the people in the apartments here park over in the town lot there. Look, it's not only get agenda tonight. We're not going to discuss it any further.
In public meeting last time, it was addressed to be on the agenda tonight.
Well, it didn't make it, George.
Please, Pierre, do I need to add something to the agenda for next week, Ben, so that we can speak? My only question and I'm trying to.
You can't add something to the agenda. We will discuss.
You don't have to have to request it. There's a public uh discourse.
You can speak at the public forum next week. All you want to do, as long as you limit your time.
Yeah.
Oh, five minutes. No, you can speak at the public hearing next uh uh Monday night for five minutes. Now, we're not rooting out, giving out our town equipment for party service.
You can bring up, you can bring a hand up.
And, Mr. Mayor, I believe we've been respectful and we are not been like you are right now.
Well, I believe that this is not on the agenda and we're not going to talk about it anymore tonight. We've got other business to contend to it here. So those of you. Who have nothing else to say can go ahead and excuse yourselves. We have a uh a. Close session to go into to discuss some more important business and who's parking in front of their store.
You're following your ordinance, sir.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, gentlemen. What now?
The big first I mean, time of year.
Yeah. Okay. That's fine.
Maybe he Javier can report us. Where we're at, where we're at.
Read read the thing when you get ready to do that.
So, um, everybody in their agenda pack has a form for the motion for convening.
I I got.
Yeah, John, they're actually.
I moved that to town council.
That's Allison.
Of Scotty.
He goes to the bathroom.
Virginia convene in a closed session to discuss the specific personnel matter. Job assignments by the town administrator.
Just call for sure, Virginia code section, two point three, three, seven, one, one, A, one, and with all the stuff, like the code section. Because if you fail to do it and you get sued, you're likely to have to pay some money out in the personal.
Go Virginia code two dash two dash three, seven, one, one, A, three. A matter involving. As we discussed.
And yes.
A second. Is it done?
Okay.
Do I have to repeat that?
Uh, could we add a roll call?
Alex, the second.
Yes.
Walter, Calvin.
Walter, please. Uh, on motion. Yeah.
So, Henson, Stan, Draxton.
Yes.
Eddie Payne.
Yes.
Not to passes.
Now, give me, give me a moment, counsel.